Hi guys, good morning! As y'all can tell, your girl is already on the road. It is 10:09, it's Saturday. Let me welcome you all back to another vlog. If you're new here, welcome. And if you're a returning viewer, subscriber, welcome back to another vlog. Um, today, as I said, today is Saturday, August... I don't know, y'all, I think today is August 23rd or 24th. Today is probably August 24th, I don't know. But it's Saturday, I'm already on the road. Honestly, this day, a lot of things came up that I didn't have planned. So, originally today, I was supposed to get my... I have a cavity that I have to get filled. My appointment is at 1 o'clock. I was trying to see if I could push that up and get done earlier, but they're not answering. And I do remember that from yesterday, they said that they have any early appointments, so it's just gonna be 1 o'clock. Um, I'm headed to get my nails done now, which is at the other side of the city. Uh, I would really normally like to be there at like 10 o'clock, but because this was not included in my plan, and it's just something that came about, it's actually 10:10 right now. And I'm supposed to get there at like 10:34, was what my GPS is telling me. So, I'm going to head now to get my nails done, my nails and my toes done. Hopefully, I could be done by like 1 o'clock. Sorry, hopefully, I could be done like by 12 o'clock, because I need to meet my 1 o'clock appointment to get my filling done on my teeth. So, hopefully, everything pretty much goes as planned in terms of that. Usually, actually, I think I'm gonna call them and see if they have any spots just before I turn up. Um, just because I've... Not that I've had issues with them before. I normally just walk in, but the last time I went, they were kinda like, "Oh yeah, just try to call before you come." And I don't see why you should have to call and ask for a spot, but let me just do it this one time. So, you know, yeah. If they can't, I could go to Chanel Mall. I have a return to do anyway in that area. So, if they can't, I'll just go to Chanel Do The Return. And then tomorrow, which is Sunday, I have an appointment to get my hair done. So glad to get my hair done, y'all. And also, I don't think I told y'all, but you remember a couple of vlogs back? I was telling y'all how I was trying to book with this girl, and she'd be booked out within minutes of her posting her... Within minutes of her opening her books? Yeah, so this last time, I did get in with her. I did get a booking with her. Y'all, I just so pissed off. My freaking dad is doing a bunch of... As usual, dad was really pissing me off. My dad is moving so slow. Same issue. I don't know why my dad is using it so fast. Like, I pay freaking $60 a month. My dad should not be going so fast. I can't, I can't call him, because I can't find his number on Google right now.
Yeah, thank you today at 10:30.
Yes, thank you so much.
Okay.
Yeah, so I just booked the nail appointment. I guess I just let him know that I was coming. Um, so they said that they can accommodate that, so hopefully, they can. I'm just gonna ask them for like a rough, like, timing, like timeframe, um, because I really do need to be done by like 12. And 10:30 is not giving me really enough time, but is my nails are gonna be more simple than they were last time, so hopefully, it's enough time. Oh yeah, sorry, y'all, I remember what I was saying. So, I was telling y'all that I, um... That this time, I actually got a booking with this girl that I've been wanting to book with for a long time. Um, however, even though she opened her books for September, y'all, the only appointment I got... When I tell y'all, she opened her books at 9:30, I booked at... I was on that, I was on her page at 9:30. And she literally had not much spots. Like, everything was after, like, maybe the second week of... Well, everything for the style that I wanted was like after the second week of September. And I thought that was so weird, because I would've wanted like something early. But no, so the appointment that I got was September 29th. And, um, I wanted to do like... I wanna do like knotless braids, but I wanna do knotless where just have curls at the end. I don't want lady boho, borabora kind of braids, because the curls, to me, just began really matted. So, I don't want to do that style. But I want curls, but I want the curls just at the ends. Like, I want at least like 3 inches of curls, 3 or 4 inches of curls at the end. Um, so that's the style that I'm gonna do. I'm probably gonna insert it here. But my appointment is gonna be on September 29th. And she's actually pretty pricey, but I just wanna experience her, um, like, her style. Because as I said, she does hair really, really good. So, I just wanna experience it, because the style itself is 350 for the length that I wanted, which is, I think I do, I think I'm doing waist length, yeah. So, it's 350 for waist length. It was 375 for butt length. So, I'm doing waist length. And also, that was not here, that was here not included. Then, to get the hair included, was gonna be $12 per pack. So, 12 by 6, she said, between 6 to 8 packs of hair. So, 12 by 6, $12 by 6 packs of hair. Alright, let me just do 8, just, you know, in case. And then, on top of these, so that's 3, that's... That is on top of the 350. And then, it is, I chose, I chose to do human hair. And human hair is $50 a bundle. And she said I'm gonna need 2 bundles, so that's another $100. So, 350 plus 12 by 8, and then $100? Yeah, y'all, that's the price. That's the price. I do believe people deserve what their prices are. However, I feel like it's the person, like, for me, it's all in my budget. But, as I said, I'mma find the money, because I want to really experience and figure out, like, if the hairstyle will last. As I know, I know, I know it's look good, but I need to figure if the hairstyle is actually last, I hold on, it will last, and if it's worth it. So, I could only really do that. I could only really like analyze if it's worth it, if I get it done, you know? So, yeah, y'all. So, what happened is, because that hairstyle is so long, oh, like, so long till the end of like September, like, near the end of September, September 29th, I was like, nah, I need to do something on my hair, no. Because I tired playing heat on my hair. The last time I washed my hair and do... I don't know if I told you all this, but the last time I washed my hair and did like me... And did like this style that I was trying to do for Sunday last week, um, when I went to Carrefour. Like, this side of my hair, my curl pattern is literally almost gone. Like, my natural hair curl pattern is actually very much so not my original curl pattern, which means that I have a lot of damage on this side of my hair. So, I just wanna stop playing heat on my hair. I mean, I already damaged it, yeah. It's no way that I could really, it's no way to repair. I just need to cut it eventually. But, we're doing it right now. So, I needed to do something on my hair. So, I decided to call up my old hairstylist, our girl that started doing my hair. She's done it a few times, and I really like her. She's usually got a good availability. And she does other services as well. She does like makeup, wigs, hair. I got an appointment with her for tomorrow, and I only booked her yesterday. That style is just gonna be some simple, like, stitch braids. I think it's like about 8 or 6 stitch braids. And that's gonna cost me $150. Oh, we have made it. Y'all, I'm probably talking so funny right now, because I cannot feel my face. Y'all, it is now 2:21. I got there at like 11:07. Well, I got inside at 11:07. They actually like officially started like getting everything done at around 1:40. It's 2:20, 21. Just finished. Uh, I had to put some gloss on my lips. I could not feel my lips. I had to like literally watch myself putting on the gloss. I think y'all saw that. Y'all, when I tell y'all, like, my face freeze, like, I literally cannot feel my ear. Like, they all, like, like, from here down, my cheek down, like, my ear, I can't feel my ear, y'all. I could literally feel this part of my ear, but like down, I cannot feel. I can't feel this earring in my ear or anything. Can't eat, I can't drink. Oh my god, but, oh, let me look at it. It don't look the best. I had a filling in the same tooth before. I had got it done back home in Barbados. This one does not look as good as my last filling, but I have forgot to tell them before I started. If y'all are probably talking funny, it's because I can't, you know... I have forgot to tell them that I did not want a silver filling. Not only silver fillings from back in the day. As I was getting this procedure done, y'all, I feel like something in my ear, but something is not in my ear. Ugh, I can't even feel my ear. And I'm trying to talk slowly, because I cannot feel my mouth and my tongue. I do not want to bite my tongue or my lip, and it start to bleed, because I will not feel it. I forgot to tell them or to ask them what color the filling is gonna be, because I do not like to see silver fillings. I know usually that was like back in the day. I just wanted to check to make sure, and I literally only remembered that as I was getting the procedure done. And because I was in the process of getting this stuff done, I couldn't say anything. I couldn't be like, I couldn't ask, um, if they were that, if they were, what color the filling was gonna be. So, it is, the filling is like the teeth color, which I'm very happy about. Y'all, I feel so weird. Like, ugh, y'all, I feel like something in my ear. I feel like something in my ear. Woo! I think I'm gonna go to the mall tomorrow to return the stuff that I have. And I need to go to Canada Post. I'm gonna head to Canada Post today possibly, but I'm just glad that I get this over with, honestly. Uh, hi guys. It is hours after. Since y'all saw me like cleaning house, I'm mopping and sweeping and stuff. I would say probably about, maybe like 3 hours, 2 and 1/2 hours. Um, so, I just finished getting out the shower, washing my hair, blow drying my hair, put it in this little bun, so that I can go and get my hair done. Nice little bun. Hopefully, my hair don't swell by the time I get it, because if it does swell, while it roots, she might got like blow dried roots a little bit. I don't know if I'm gonna take y'all. I've never vlogged. I don't really vlog around with service providers. Um, on S, it's probably like a nail salon, where she's not really focusing on me, per se. But, yeah, so, I don't know if I'm gonna take y'all, but I just gained some, few little plat bats done, and y'all will see them when I get home. I was trying to pack my bags, so I could take everything I need to take. I think I'm gonna pay her by e-transfer instead of giving her cash. It's now 3:53. My appointment is at 5. I'm actually gonna put in the address now, so that I could tell myself how long it would take me to get to her. Think her address, what did she say the address was? Okay, yes, phoned her. Y'all. Uh, I literally... I did hear this, just open my phone, and see that she messaged me saying that she can't do it today, and she can do Wednesday at 5:30. Hi guys, I am taking a little stroll. Um, I told myself that I wanted to like start taking some hot girl walks before the summer was up. And the summer is literally soon out. Excuse my appearance. I wanted to put a hat on my head, but I can't find it. And it's sun pretty much down outside, cool, you know? So, I was like, man, I don't really need the hat. So, I just left the headset on. But I've never seen this park up here. Um, so anyways, I just told myself, let me take a little walk, clear my head. Um, especially because this week is like my family at work, so it can get like really busy. At least, there is a, I think September 1st, yeah, September 1st is a holiday, so that's, uh, the good part. But yeah, so I'm just walking in the neighborhood and taking a little crosswalk, because I wanna go in the park, but I don't really need to go in the park, I wanna chill, so... Everybody, including me, had so many plans for the New Year, so many goals, so many things that they wanted to start doing. I wanted to start gym or working out, and I haven't. So, I was like, let me just start with something small, something like small and doable, instead of like going all out. Why not start? We're taking little walks around the neighborhood. Um, like, when I get home from work. Today is Monday. Oh yeah, I didn't, I didn't say the day, y'all. I don't remember what part, how much, I don't remember what I was vlogging before this. Oh, I remember what I was vlogging before this. Anyways, let me say the day. Today is Monday, August 26th. 26th or 27th. As y'all know, yesterday, I was supposed to get my hair done, which was Sunday. And I came on camera, I told y'all, that happened. Um, so, my hair girl, she rescheduled for me. The person I had booked rescheduled for me to come. Well, she wanted me to come on Wednesday, but I didn't want to do Wednesday, so I tell she that I... Because honestly, from Wednesday, is when I can probably be working late, get ready for Monday. So, I told her that Monday or Tuesday is better for me. So, she said Tuesday is good for her. So, I can, I'm gonna get it tomorrow evening. Like, first of all, I see the message, it really... She had sent me the message, she had sent me the message wrong, like 11:00. I had only seen the message around... Because I was getting ready to leave home at... I was getting ready to leave home at 4:30 to go to work, go to work. I was getting ready to leave home at 4:30 to get into her for 5 o'clock. So, when I open the message to check the address, to put it in the phone, to like know how long it takes me to get, where I gotta get, is when she, when I see the message that she had messaged me hours ahead at 11 something, basically telling me that, um, you know, that she can't do it no more, and that she wanna reschedule. So, we rescheduled, so we can get it done tomorrow. Ooh, y'all, let me show y'all this bunny. My other thing was that I need to start buying some wigs and stuff, because I feel like, in times like this where I wash my hair, everything, and I wash my hair, I dye my hair, wash and dye and treat my hair. But I didn't wanna like put, like, I didn't wanna go and put like more, um... I didn't wanna go and put like more product in my hair, because I just wash it, you know? So, I didn't wanna wait down and put all that stuff, or I didn't wanna have to go and wash it again. I just literally went with my hair. I want my hair to look so crazy, so messy, so untidy. But I just was not trying to put any sort of edge control or gel or anything in my hair for me to have to like wash it and stuff like that. So, y'all, look at all the hair damage. Look at the damage that the hair did last week or 2 weeks ago. I think it's always like 2 weeks, no? Like, crazy. I ain't even show y'all some of the cars. Look, you see how bad the houses get damaged? Look at the car. Y'all can see the dents on the car. This one ain't as bad, but car ain't as bad. Yeah, wow, these cars are hair damaged. I would crave if that was badly. Another little bunny's. I feel like this was the second, I think this was like the second hair damage that was, the second hailstorm that was really, really bad. Since I've been in Calgary, maybe I wasn't even paying attention to it before. But this was the second really bad one. Honestly, in a situation like that, you really don't, there ain't really nothing you could do. You're carrying a damage, and you just got, yeah, insurance to pay for it, or paid out of pocket to repair it. Can't really do nothing but take. Because, yeah, if you home my stuff, and like if you get the warnings early enough, but sometimes the warnings don't come true early enough. Sometimes the warnings become true, and then you on the road. If you're on the road, you can't really do nothing but take, you know? Alright guys, still walking. It's probably about, maybe 15, maybe 15 minutes? I don't know since I spoke to y'all. Um, I came around, I can't even hear myself with these headphones in. I came around, past, um, past my house, and came down to the pond. Um, I discovered this like a couple of weeks ago. We came, you know, here, so, saw that. Um, this was like the first, that was the first time we ever like actually walk past like where our house is. So, I'm gonna walk and go down there. And I think there's a kind of a color set. I don't think there's a, uh, I don't think you can go out the other end. It looks everywhere, but you can't, so... There's a pond behind me, and no swimming, blah, 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 blah. Yeah. That's pretty much it. Let me go to here. I go home. I didn't really got much more of anything to say, so I probably will, y'all, when I get home. Ooh, y'all, look at that little jet thing in the sky. Look at it. Came from all over there, all over here. I've been real skeptical that like cars and stuff that be parked, because like when I come, no, this car was not here just now. If they parked, it kidnapped me or something. I know, I know what would do. I got some loan deals, so I scratch a little bit, zawa. Gonna enjoy the rest of my walk. Good morning, guys. I had such a bad sleep, um, because of my hair. I got my hair done last night. It didn't show y'all anything yet, because I didn't take my camera with me. And I got home, I didn't get home too late. I got home around like 9, probably around like 9:40 or so. Um, so I got my hair done, and my hair is super, super tight. It's always tight on the first day. But my braider, she really, really grips hair. She be getting all the hair in. It is 7:15, I think, it's 7:16. Uh, my alarm is about to snooze again. It's Wednesday, August 28th. It's raining, so I just hope that it's not like hailstorm rain. Um, actually, this was supposed to happen last night, this hailstorm. Yeah, rain is forecasted for the next hour. It looked like it would be probably raining for like the whole day, rainy, windy. Yeah, so, till 12. No, yeah, it gonna be pretty much like this for the whole entire day. Today is just not gonna be a sunny day. So, that means today should be cool, and yeah, which is good. Um, I'm gonna show y'all what's like. Uh, look, y'all, it's raining. Like, a late weather like this, but not when I have to be getting... Such a gloomy, for me, up all I'm gonna do is put on a little bit of powder, brush up my lashes, I already got some gloss. I'm just trying to kill the shine, you see? I ain't really trying to do much, just to kill the low shine. And that was a fucking look forward, honestly. I am hitting pan while I've been eating time on this. This makes me lean, fit me, everyday, press powder, everyday and everything, because I just always use it for my face. I can tell you, it's 8:22. So, I just got a little cereal. I had my lunch, I'm like, I haven't got lunch today. I'm gonna buy a Montant suit from the, I'm gonna buy some Montant suit from the V. Y'all forget my girlfriend upstairs, talking dirty. Um, I'm gonna buy some Montant suit from the Bistro at work. I have called out it. Yeah, at least hope I look tomorrow. I don't really think I look too much with it. I think I look pretty good. Let me just brush it down a little bit. I think I look pretty good. I don't know what else to say, but I think it look pretty good. This is what we look like for work. Simple little work look, and call it it. It's gonna be a rainy day. I already feel like my stomach's starting to hurt me, because I'm on my cycle. And I did not take my fingers before I left. At least I remember to take my multivitamins, because I've been slacking on those. I mean, they're almost gone, so I have been doing something, but I've been slacking on them. I feel like this hairstyle giving away a lot of forehead. But, you know, you gotta try new things. Um, yeah, I'll probably show you all the inspo picture that I had. Because she was basically saying, "My hair is sticky now, that I really wouldn't need too much hair added up top." So, she pretty much only added hair like maybe halfway. So, like, the first part, like the first, I would say, first, um... When I say 10 plats, I mean like, I don't know. I would say like probably this much of the braid is my natural hair. And then the end is when she added in here just for like the ends and to elongate it. I really do like it, because she could braid really, really good. Like, there's nothing about it, like, you know, she could braid really good. The parts are super neat. I think for me, it's just like how it feeling, the shape on my head, it's just something for me to get accustomed to. Um, but yeah, I feel like that's it. I just need to get accustomed to the look. So, yeah, y'all, I don't wanna end up seeing it. I'm gonna see y'all when I get to work, or probably when I get home. Oh, I need to return my package today. I've been wanting to return my package. I've been had that since last week, so I need to return that today for sure. And yes, my body started to hurt me. Ugh, the pain is starting to hit me. Hi guys, welcome or welcome back. No, yeah, welcome or welcome back to another vlog. Or honestly speaking, another part of a already started vlog. Y'all know that I don't ever know. So, yeah. But anyways, so today is Saturday. No, today is not even Saturday. Today is Sunday, September 1st. And tomorrow's my holiday, so home tomorrow. Tomorrow's Labor Day in Canada, well, Labor Day, I guess, in the US and Canada. Yeah, girl. So, anyways, I, it is now 12:32. I just showered, cleaned the house, um, a little bit, and house sparking, sparking, everything clean. So anyways, I just showered. I came on to start the vlog, or continue the vlog. I don't really know what we doing today. Well, I know what we doing. So, basically, I just showered, I wanna head to the library, or find somewhere where I can like do some work, take my computer with me, just get with the host and do some, some stuff. Um, I have been in a funk for, I don't know, y'all. Maybe, maybe, honestly, maybe a good couple of months. I don't really know. But my girlfriend is helping me to understand that she feels like I may kinda be a little bit depressed or... Let me not call it depression, just call it like a little, going through a little funk that I didn't know. Um, I haven't been motivated to do much of anything. Um, I've been really trying to be consistent with my videos. However, I feel as though like I am putting out the videos, but there's not much purpose behind it. But that's another talk for another day. But anyways, right now, um, y'all know me, always in a t-shirt, always in a tee, because that's the easiest thing for me to put on. And this is actually, I think, like the last week, the last good weekend before the fall weather starts coming in, and like winter start hitting me hard again. Y'all know I hate winter. But anyways, so, I just come on to do my little edges and, um, do my edges, well, I only got one edge, because it's only one little, one little swoop de scoop. So, I come on to do that, and I just gonna put a little bit of powder. Sorry, y'all, I got y'all on this thing. But yeah, excuse the door being open behind me. Hopefully, we don't see a ghost walk, but because... I just hear something weird too, but I... Anyways, anyways, y'all. So anyways, yeah. So, I come on to just do my little edges and, um, bring my head out and go to the library. and go to the library I was trying to figure if I want to get like a little Starbucks drink first but I was honestly just gonna do that like for the purpose of the vlog because I mean I do drink Starbucks but it's not like an everyday thing for me honestly I just been trying to drink a lot more water and yeah that's pretty much it just trying to drink my water and be cool you know um but yeah y'all so that is very I excuse my phone I had to put my phone on load because I had a lash appointment today but my sister is traveling something this week she traveled this week and she could not get an appointment with her lash tech so um I recommended her to go to I don't know how that look y'all that look weird or that cute I can't really you see that it's here it look goodly if you're looking at me head on but if you're looking at me straight like this and you see the size sticking out like cause I could see it sticking up here but I really can't do nothing but it's sticking out I don't know how to like flatten it or whatever but yeah so I then head to the library and as I say I want to do some stuff I haven't been focusing at all on the course that I was doing y'all when I tell y'all at all it's months it's been like month since I opened that book and when I said that book I mean that book really months so um I need to get on my zoom y'all I know I know I need to get my zoom that's why I was that's why I really was going through funk um as it come as it turns to like the job search I haven't had any leads with any job search um recently still applying for jobs um I won't say like every day but I would say like well could be possibly every day but it's not like I spend hours a day looking for jobs I would just go and get like the notifications from the job site that I use and they will kind of just like match me and tell me that okay yeah well we found this job it seems like it fits your skills you know and I would look into it and see like if it asks me for anything specifically a certain certification or um you know whatever if it's something that I feel like I could do I will apply if I feel like it's something that I can't do I won't apply even if I feel like it's something that I really that I feel like they won't hire me for because I'm not trending um I would sell something to play but yeah so that is pretty much that and that's very job situation stands um but yeah so that's all I wanted to do y'all I just wanted to put a little bit of face on because I don't want to have my too much makeup you know y'all I tried to figure out how I want to really do this room because like I got a low charge all the time I hear something that talking to y'all um so basically alright so y'all can see like there's my mirror here or whatever right but with my mirror being there my ring light and stuff is like right here next to me y'all see it like it right next like right here right so when I in the camera like if I turn y'all I would look in the mirror I want to take cute pictures and stuff and the background itself is not bad the only thing that is annoying me is the lights and stuff but the this is a pretty small room so there's the whole room this is like so there's the door y'all can see the door here and then like this is the lights my desk right was just at the couch chair da 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 that little thing the low um stool that was so my old vanity that could go downstairs because my old vanity don't stay anywhere and then this little couch yeah and I just got a little bit junky so my thing is that I don't want to have this in my pictures you know but many second pictures or whatever I would clear the desk but I just don't want these to be here but I really don't know what to do with them because I don't want completely put them up and then I can't really put them in my closet because my closet is just very very junky I got a TV down there I just got really late sorry so I hold the closet so I don't want um I was looking for this this hat the other day alright y'all we made it to the library um I just put my package in the front seat so I could remember it when I get in car cause I know me I know me very well but let me show y'all this is one of them that I have opened yet this is like the little one of the smells saying the little saint things this is new car smell and then this one I have in here right now is called vanilla obviously because it yellow and it's like a little dog yeah a little bit strong but I just look that cute so that's what I need um hang on after this we gonna open going here okay so I just made it to the mall I'm at Sunridge Mall and I don't come to this mall often but I just realized that I got Urban Planet out here so I was like that's good because I've been wanting to go to Urban Planet so I could um I've been wanting to go to Urban Planet so I could get a jean let's see what we find hey y'all I've got some jeans jeans that I'm looking for is for work so I need them to be like um no distress uh I don't know I might pass battery here I might pass battery here if possible but let me go and do what I gotta do first I need to go to winners and that's more important oh no that lane that's not a quick lane y'all I'm gonna tell y'all I would say hot as balls like it's thirty three it was thirty three degrees just when I was in the car thirty three thirty three degrees yeah I absolutely don't need another pair of whole shoes but I like this color more um they pretty much feel the same exact way honestly this one a little I don't know it pretty much feel the same way but doesn't maintain both of them is maintain so I need to be looking at a larger size doesn't maintain true this one here is uh this is the other one this is the other color this is like this color but it don't got the crisscross X thing I think I prefer the crisscross X and this one feel like a lot way too bigger like too much bigger so cause this is maintain then this is eleven twelve so let's see I like this this cute y'all this is such a pretty like everything bag but like travel bag also especially because they got a little pride at the back for like you know when you used to kiss thing when you traveling and then I like this one too I've been liking like this material or like these materials this one look kind of big and nice oh this was the same thing too no this look like a good travel bag definitely but I already got like a travel bag already oh y'all know this is a good ass travel bag I think I'm gonna get this let me say the price though cause it is huge it has this thing here and it is sixty bucks what I like about it too is that it has like it's sturdy and it has you know it has shape to it alright guys so of course one of the main reasons why I came to the mall is closed which is for shoppers because I want to return my package but um shoppers is not closed but Canada Post is closed so I won't have to do that another day well not even tomorrow like next week because because what am I saying because tomorrow is a holiday so I won't be able to do it then yeah so tomorrow's my holiday so I won't be able to do it then um so I can go do it like next week I already got a bunch of things that I didn't need um I forgot to get the bag that my mother wanted uh she didn't want her like a little gift bag to put a little gift in a little present the little gift that she had got for the lady and I went to Dollarama and I didn't get that I will I get everything else that I think I needed from Dollarama besides that I totally forget about that but I was gonna go back but it lanes so long like the mall itself just real busy and I can understand why because it's a three day weekend and then the mall closed tomorrow tomorrow busy Dollarama was real busy went to winners um just ended up getting any shoes that I showed y'all for myself my girlfriend need like the cool shoes cause I wanted to get the cool shoes for her I don't even know if I showed y'all the cool shoes I ever just showed her but I think they were really cute um but the fluffy part there's like a fluffy part in the shoe and on top the shoe that is white so I think like stuff like that is was really get dirty fast that was what we just got I got I still glad I went Dollarama though I got two like mats because the guest bathroom downstairs has not had mats for like months I think even before Christmas we got ready the mats so we threw those away so I just got some to replace those if y'all ever had a question of if I was a Caribbean soca baby or a Caribbean dance hall baby I a dance hall baby just know the soca I mean I could do a little bit of soca but you see it's really the dance hall for me so and the old school dance hall some of the new school too you know I could I could tag you little Barbie blah 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 but I the I the dance hall
I'll be your home by the day don't need that tomorrow gonna be my own mark tell me what you want you say you had a life it's my time and I love it's never just you but you can bring it to the floor flawless flawless baby what you call us if this shit don't involve money I'm off it I can be your own model give me everything before we end it I'm gonna go swim so GT three no more shows more MTV those know your own step on the haircut that you need I swear you don't go after me I just said it all so I turned twenty-three I could teach you like a ball if you just let it be we be some highs I be so lucky she wanna fly with you let's make green I'll be your home by the home don't need that tomorrow gonna be a friend now tell me what you want you say you had a life it's my time and I love it's never just you but you can bring it to the floor flawless flawless baby what you call us if this shit don't involve money I'm off it I can be your own model give me everything before we end it I'm against the rules don't let your attitude
so I just came to end off the vlog I really don't remember what was in this vlog but I will find out when I edit it um so yeah just come to end it off I wanna say thank you guys for watching so much I hope you've been enjoying my uploads and if there's anything specific that you wanna see ask me anything in the comment section down below leave a nice comment like share subscribe stay tuned for more videos to come I'm gonna see y'all in the next vlog bye guys